I call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission, February 5th, 2014. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card, they look like this, and file it with the Secretary, Sherry, prior to the start of the meeting. Cards are available in the lobby. Speakers should state their name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be directed to the commission, not the audience. While Planning Commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum, and to obey the orders of the Chair. Could we have roll call, please?
Osborne, Nicklin?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Crabtree?
Here.
Merk?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Nolan, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is our Public Communications. Public Communications is a time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission, and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. So I have three speaker's cards for the public comment section, and the first one is Jim Berube.
Thank you very much. My name is Jim Berube, and I live at 1124 Del Prado Court in Ojai. And I've lived within 200 feet of this monstrosity called a mono-eucalyptus tree cell tower. Does this sound like that belongs in Ojai, let alone in a residential area? I have lived in Ojai for almost 40 years. I worked at the Ojai Unified School District for over 30 years, ending my career as Assistant Superintendent. One of my responsibilities was facilities. During my tenure as a school administrator, I know the importance of adhering to policies, deadlines, and timelines. I must say, the cell tower project is a mess. Policies were not followed, deadlines were not adhered to, and procedures were ignored. I have seen what happens when these rules or regulations have been abused. The picture is not pretty. The long process ends up in litigation with public money wasted and residents losing trust in their officials. As an example, I did not get a notice of this project until January 3rd, 2014. In the notice, it stated the city has completed a draft for the proposed project described and the draft was available for public review. The public comment period for the draft ended on December 30th, 2013. I did not have an opportunity to comment on this project. I am angry at the Lutheran Church for selling out their neighbors for a monthly check from AT&amp;T Corporation. I am angry at the city for not notifying residents that will be affected by this awful 65-foot mono-eucalyptus tree. I am angry that my property value will be decreased due to this project, and I am sad about the current situation, as this is not the Ojai I have experienced in the past. This project has negatively affected not only the residents that live close to this project, but to all Ojai. It's an assault on all of us. The residents of Ojai have paid city staff, and they have done a poor job. They have wasted their time and our time. Now is the time to get this mess under control. I'm asking the Planning Commission and the City Council to put a stop to this project outright, or begin the process over again before everyone is involved in a senseless and costly litigation. This is only the beginning of public comment on this project, as more Ojai residents become aware and involved in protecting this lovely valley and the people that live in it. This is the Ojai that I remember. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berube.
I'd like to leave this.
The next card is Jan Lewis.
Planning Commissioners and city staff, I'm Jan Lewis. I'm a Realtor here in Ojai, and I am appalled by the proposal of this tower for many reasons, but the most important reason to me is that it's going to affect property values. The people who live in the neighborhood might not even be able to sell their homes, because many people don't want to be near the tower. But something that occurred to me this week was, we've all in this room heard everyone say, "Why does AT&amp;T need another tower? Our service is fine. Why are they doing this?" And all of a sudden, it occurred to me, "What about the smart meters?" So I went online, and I looked up smart meters. Do you know how smart meters send their information? Through cell towers! So it's never been mentioned in any of the meetings, and I was shocked that no one brought it up, but I suspect that this is why they are motivated to put this tower in, because they are pushing, you know, the smart meters. And I understand that Southern California Gas, even though they claim that they are not installing them in Ojai, they have started to attempt to install them. One of my neighbors chased them out of her backyard, and they were attempting to install a meter. We know that the water company, Golden State, has said that they will do the same. So it's my feeling, and it's just a gut feeling, based on my research online, that this has nothing to do with telephone service. It's all about the smart meters. The location where they are proposing to put it is wrong for so many reasons. There are beautiful, mature trees that are going to be removed. There is a marsh that forms underneath the tower during heavy rain. There is a nursery school that is within feet of where the tower is proposed. And there are so many other places that might, if it is necessary, be more appropriate in the county. So I'm hoping that the Planning Commission will take into consideration all these things when they are looking at the application for the conditional use permit. And am I allowed to ask, where are you in the process with their application? There's rumors that they've been told to start over. There are rumors that it's simply continuing as applied for. May I ask you to address that?
Staff can probably address that better than I can, but at the end of the meeting last week, we continued it to an uncertain date. So AT&amp;T is supposed to come back with a new proposal to us, basically.
Okay. And then will there be a new notification of a new hearing?
Yes.
Okay. And how much time will there be after notification is sent out before a hearing itself?
I hope there'll be a lot of time.
A lot of time, like weeks?
I hope so.
Okay, good.
I hope we don't have two days for people to comment.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Appreciate it. Let's see. Mr. Miley.
Bill Miley, North Signal Street. And like Jim Berube, I've been here 40-plus years, and hope to be here anymore. I have a serious limerick I'd like to present to you all. And the title of it is "Antenna Anxiety." There was once a little town called Ojai. It was such a fine place to be, that a tower was built 65 feet to the sky, microwaves didn't fly, and we all ended up with antenna anxiety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. I just received two more speaker's cards, and they don't have a designation on them, but I presume they're for this public comment period. First one is Michael Francis Smith.
Thank you. I am a new resident here. I've been here all of six weeks, and I wanted to express my concern about the apparent lack of trust that has occurred surrounding the proposed installation of the AT&amp;T cell tower. I happen to be leasing a home that would be affected quite dramatically if that is indeed installed there, and I'm considering buying a home in the neighborhood. However, this information has really made me reconsider. I have attended a few meetings with the neighbors in the local area. I'm a psychotherapist by trade, and I want to indicate to you that there is real anxiety going on. The gentleman that just shared the limerick really was discussing something that's quite important, and something that you all have the ability to intervene and solve. I'm told that neighbors are losing sleep. I'm told that neighbors are unable to eat. People that have invested, you know, all of their time and effort in Ojai are shocked at what's going on. Specifically, I wonder if you can answer a question. I'm certainly not an attorney, and I don't have a legal background, but I've been reading the FCC rules regarding something referred to as the 150-day shot rule, which, in my very rudimentary understanding, indicates that once a municipality has accepted an application as complete, which I understand Ojai has done as of October 31st, 2013, there is 150 days for, the FCC deems that there will be 150 days in which there will be an ability for the community to react. After that, the community will have much less input. It's confusing as to whether that 150-day clock rule is running right now. Does anyone on this commission happen to know the answer to that question?
I don't think we do. That'd be something that staff might be able to address.
Does anyone know what I'm talking about when I refer to the 150-day shot rule? Can you comment on whether the clock is running or not? Because this is what's causing great anxiety. So is the clock running, or is the clock not running?
Sure. I'd love it.
Okay. I believe that my understanding of the situation is that the city has engaged a professional that is an expert in the type of siding cell towers, and that's the question that's been posed to them. I don't know if we have an answer yet, but I believe that we're making sure that we're adhering to all of the FCC guidelines, as well as the permit streamlining guidelines, and that's why we've engaged an expert in that field. So I can't definitively answer your question, but I know that we're aware of it, and we're researching it to make sure that we don't miss any timeframes.
Okay. Your answer makes my stomach turn, with all due respect. This is either a yes or a no answer. So I appreciate the fact that you don't want to go on record giving me the wrong answer, but if indeed the 150-day rule is running, the community has only until March 31st to voice its opposition? Otherwise, that cell tower is going up.
Well, I think also one of the--
According to my understanding.
So I think one of the things, too, that the city's trying to do is make everyone aware of what's going on, and is using the city's website to provide information. So I believe that when we get some of these more definitive answers, I believe that will be available to the public.
So at this point, because you're unable to answer my question definitively, we actually could be in a condition where we have only until March 31st to voice our opposition?
Theoretically, we're all aware that there are certain FCC guidelines and certain permit streamlining guidelines. And so I don't know the rules and regulations as far as the FCC, to the extent that you said you've read them. I'm new here. I've been here all of a week. I'm not trying to make your stomach any more upset than it already is, but I'll tell you that we are moving forward fast and quickly to get experts on staff, or to assist staff to answer your questions and answer the community's questions satisfactorily.
My last question is, is the city going to make any recompense to the poor woman that owns the nursery over which this tower is to be erected? Has anyone considered the number of lives being affected by your decision? All those children, all those parents, all the people in the neighborhood? So I'm not really clear on procedure. I could be speaking out of turn. I am new to the neighborhood. I'm very impressed with Ojai. I hope that you make the right decision, and are true to your community members, and give them the input that they deserve.
Thank you. I also have a card here from Michelle Thomas.
Hello, Mr. and Madam Commissioners. My name's Michelle Thomas. I live at 1125 Del Prado Court in Ojai. I've lived in a one-story house that backs up to the field where the tower is going to be erected for 30 years. I don't want to belabor and go over things that have already been said, but I agree. This not knowing really is upsetting to me. We need facts. We need to find out when the clock started ticking, how long we have, and we need to find out soon. So I respectfully request that you put this on your agenda for a hearing, and listen to how flawed that application is, and reject it. It's flawed because the initial environmental impact report did not even mention, or study, did not even mention the preschool that's right next to it. It's flawed because it was mishandled. There's no need that the city lose six trees. There's just no need for, there's been no demonstrated need for a tower at all. And there has been no indication that AT&amp;T has ever considered any of the other sites that two local ranchers very nearby have offered. So for all those reasons, I respectfully request that you get this on your agenda, study it, and decide what you want to do with it. And I want to make a couple other comments also. This isn't just a "not in my backyard" neighborhood. This issue affects our whole city. It affects it aesthetically. As people have mentioned, everybody driving down Grand's going to notice a 65-foot fake sycamore tree. It affects our property values, therefore decreasing our taxes that we use to run the city. It affects the schools. It affects people's tranquility and ability to live in a peaceful neighborhood. We have a very quiet neighborhood there. We're talking about putting a 65-foot cell tower in. We don't know how it's going to affect health, and I know that's not an issue that the FCC rules, but we do know that it's going to run 24/7, and it is going to be noisy. We know that aesthetically, it's going to be an issue. We know it's going to block my view, and those of my neighbors. We know that that meadow is over an aquifer that has a wet lens during rainy years. I've seen a heron in that neighborhood more than once in wet years. Is this not an impact? I mean, these are all huge impacts, and these directly affect not only my neighborhood, but my whole community. So again, please, put this on your agenda. Get this thing put to rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to talk on this subject? Or anything, any subject? Because we're still in the public communications area. Yeah? Okay. Thank you all for your comments. We will move on now to the consent calendar, which is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission from January 15th.
I'll move to approve the consent item.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Nicklin?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
All right. Next is the Municipal Advisory Council Planning Commission Liaison Report. Did we have someone go to the meeting?
I did.
All right. And do we have a representative from the MAC here? No? Okay. Can you tell us about the meeting?
All right. At the meeting, I briefed the MAC on things that we've been covering at our meetings the last couple of meetings. And on their agenda, they were reviewing a flood control project for the canyon that floods Casita Springs. You might remember the 2005 flood when Casitas was pretty flooded up. And so the Flood Control District has a project to fix the channel, make the channel wider. They're going with a bigger pipe underneath the highway. And that was their only item on the agenda.
Great. Thank you. We're moving on to public hearing items, and the first one is a conditional use permit.
Man, I--
Go ahead.
Chair.
Jump right in.
I'd like to discuss the sequence of the agenda.
All right.
And whether we should move reverse items two and three.
Two and three.
And--
Two is going to be continued.
Two is going to be three and four?
Yes, three and four. Thank you. And the reason is, on item three, we're going to be discussing building heights, and perhaps even making a recommendation to council, while on item four, we're discussing building heights in a workshop. So if there's no problem with that, I would recommend that we switch those two.
All right. Does staff have any input on that? Does it make a difference to you either way?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, I think that's appropriate.
You can go either way on that?
I actually prefer that, I think we'd all prefer to have it the way--
All right. I'll make an executive decision. We're going to switch items three and four on the agenda. But we still have to deal with item two, which is a conditional use permit, CUP 1306, and design review permit, DRP 13-15, for the placement and operation of a recycle center at 214 Bryant Street. And I understand from staff that we want to continue this?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Do we need--
Before we continue, I need to find out what's going on here.
All right.
If you don't mind, I'll take a second.
Jump right in.
Rob, do you have a second to come to the podium? I'm glad to see you're here. Maybe you can answer me a few questions, or to the podium, podium.
Okay.
So you have a staff meeting every week, right, to go over these things?
I have a regular staff meeting, yeah, not every week.
Do you have any idea what's going on with this?
I do not know, no.
Okay. I can tell you that I know what's going on with it, and I can tell you with no uncertainty that your staff has completely dropped the ball on this. And I have spent enough time on this, helping the applicant out, to facilitate working with the county. And my time is not invaluable, and I don't appreciate the way this thing has gone over the past three weeks. We basically have had nothing happen, and I want you to know that I am not going to pull punches with you. If I'm going to be involved with something like this, and move it along, and spend my own time working on it, I expect your staff to keep on top of it, and to not drop the ball, especially when I'm talking to people at the county regarding this thing, on behalf of one of our citizens, and someone that needs to get something done, when we've assured her that we were going to work with her outside this committee. And I want you to know that I do not appreciate what's been going on with this. So my suggestion is tomorrow, you have a staff meeting on this, and you have a follow-up meeting with me, so that your staff no longer embarrasses me with the county, which is what they've done.
So I'll be glad to get back to you tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'm not going to be in town tomorrow, but I'll give you a call.
Yeah. Something needs to happen, and quickly.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
With that, I'm definitely in favor of continuing this item.
All right. Would you like to make a motion to that effect?
Yes. I would like a motion to continue conditional use permit 1306, and design review permit DRP 13-15, for the placement of an operational recycle center at 214 Bryant Street. Property owner, Ann Adamson. Applicant, Representative Liz Duran, Ed Recycling. And we are continuing this, I think we need to continue it to a date certain. Is that not correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So we continue it just with an open understanding of a future meeting.
Okay. But we're not setting a date for that meeting?
Apparently not.
All right. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Nicklin?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nolan? Yes.
Thank you. So we will move on to the Building Heights Workshop, which is originally item four, and this is a staff presentation.
So we've had several meetings where we've talked about the building height, and there are three basic changes that are being considered. One change is that currently, the maximum height is 30 feet and two stories in residential zones. And we've proposed new rules which would lower the height to 25 feet and two stories, but would allow architectural features up to 30 feet if they can meet certain justification to justify that. Secondly, right now, single-story residential dwellings are always exempt from design review. The proposed new rules would require the design review be required for single-story residential buildings that are in excess of 20 feet. And then the third thing is the solar access height limit. When the City Council was reviewing this a number of months ago, they noted that the City of Santa Barbara has a solar height limit. Currently, we don't have any protection for residences to make sure that their access to solar energy is protected. And so the City of Santa Barbara has this regulation, and we've considered and talked about at a previous workshop, looking at it for the City of Ojai. However, before doing that, the commission asked that we notice all of the public, so that people who had concerns about the potential height limit would have an opportunity to comment on it. So a notice was sent out at the beginning of January, indicating that there'd be a workshop today. So this is not an action item. It's really just an input item for your information, and to receive input from the public. We have put together a little demonstration that I'd like to go through right now, and I want to excuse myself for facing backwards to you, but I'm going to have to face the audience, and I think most of you have seen the demonstration before. So with that, if we could reduce the lighting. So this lamp represents the sun at winter solstice. So you may remember a couple months ago--
Oh, excuse me. Could you talk into the mic, maybe? Is there a possibility someone--
Maybe jump back--
--get a mic to you or something?
Maybe I can tape him.
That'd be great. Thanks.
The lamp represents the sun at its lowest point at winter solstice. So if you remember, a couple months ago, even in the middle of the day, the sun was very low in the sky. And this represents a house with a solar panel on it, and you may be able to see, there's a little sketch of a solar panel on the roof of that house. And this is a neighboring house. Right now, even when the sun is at its lowest point in the sky, the solar panel can receive light and energy and power the house. However, if the neighbor was to add a second story and have a 25-foot tall house, and this represents the actual distance, minimum distance that you'd have in setbacks between two homes, it blocks the solar panel. So the solar panel wouldn't be effective, and this house would not be able to get energy. The solar height ordinance, in its very simplest form, and there are some nuances to it, but in its simplest form, creates an envelope that goes up at the northerly boundary of this property, 15 feet, and then across at a 30-degree angle. And that's the angle that's required in order to preserve access to the solar panel. So if that type of inordance were adopted, this homeowner could still add to their house, but they couldn't add to the whole length of the house. So you can see, this is a 25-foot addition, and the sun's still shining on the solar panel. So the purpose of the solar access ordinance is just that, to provide solar access. In putting this item together, we've spent a little bit of time-- In putting this item together, we've spent a little bit of time with the city of Santa Barbara, hearing how they work the solar access ordinance. They've had it on their books for a number of years, and it seems to work well there. But we thought it would be beneficial for you to be able to hear from the horse's mouth, so to speak. So we've invited Danny Cato, who is a senior planner for the city of Santa Barbara. He was very generous with his time and spent a great deal of time with Commissioner Becker, our former inter-director, Ann McLaughlin, and myself explaining how it works. And really, I think the main reasons for him to be here are to let you know that they've had it there for a period of time, that it's worked well, and then maybe to answer any questions you might have about it. So Danny, I know he doesn't have a prepared presentation, he's really just here to answer the questions.
Hi, my name's Danny Cato, I'm a senior planner with the city of Santa Barbara. I worked there for 25 years, almost. And so the solar access ordinance for the city of Santa Barbara has been in place the whole time I've been employed there. We adopted it back in 1986, for the purpose exactly as Rob said, is to protect solar access. The ordinance was, I mean, there weren't a whole lot of solar collectors, you know, like there are today. It was, although there are some provisions in our ordinance about that, it was really more for not shading people's windows in their backyards and that kind of thing. That's how it's been used, well, I mean, that's the effect of it today. You know, there's more and more PV going in, so it's more and more important for this ordinance to be in place. I wanted to say that, you know, I wasn't around when it first was adopted, right? I came to the city about four or five years later, and by that time, you know, it was already kind of, it's already been set in stone for a little while. You know, and so I don't know of any controversy that may have happened in the first four or five years. I can tell you that since we adopt, since I've been working for the city in 1989, it's been, it's one of the more technically difficult ordinances to interpret. But, it's been around such a long time that architects and designers understand it, and so it's pretty straightforward. You know, it's more difficult to calculate than like a setback, right, which is pretty easy. But it's, we, I think you've seen our handouts, and we've done a good job as we can to try to explain how to do it and how to show it on a plan. And that's, it's been pretty well received, you know? I haven't heard any, I mean, there just hasn't been a large outcry from property owners that, oh, we shouldn't have to comply with this ordinance, what's the purpose of it? You know, I think because everybody's affected by their southern neighbor, you know, they want it for themselves, and so they understand that in order to get it for themselves, they have to give it to their next northern neighbor. Right, so, and I think because of self-interest, enlightened self-interest, it's been pretty well received. So that's what I have to say, but I'm happy to answer any questions about how it works or anything.
Thank you. Do we have questions?
I do, if I may. What's your building height limit?
Chairman, Commissioner Crabtree, it's, for single-family zones, it's 30 feet, for multi-family zones, it's 45 feet. And so the way that our ordinance works, and I think you have something similar, the way that yours is written, for single-family zones and the duplex zones, the R2 zone, it's, you go up 12 feet at the northern property line, and then you go over, up 30 degrees. In the multi-family zones, you go up 18 feet, and then you go over 30 degrees. It's because, you know, you allow three stories and 45 feet, you have to allow more solar, you know, allow more shading. And the other thing, I don't know, I haven't been following how you guys have been discussing this, but it doesn't absolutely, completely eliminate shading on your neighbor's property. It's not for that, it's to limit the amount of shading that's allowed to a certain kind of reasonable amount.
Other question?
I had another, do you, just, this would be anecdotal, but did, do you think the ordinance encouraged solar panels on roofs? Or do you think it served to encourage people to do it?
Chairman, Commissioner Crabtree, I don't think it had that kind of effect. That was, in my experience, that's purely an economic decision that people make, you know? And sometimes a kind of a social responsibility sort of question. But this, this in and of itself didn't cause more photovoltaic cells or solar collectors, but it helps to have it for the time that you want to put it on, you know? So you have room on your roof or on your property that is allowed to collect sunlight.
Great. Well, I'll be bringing that part of it up a little later. One other question. Did you see many applications of terrible architecture like that occurring? In order to avoid the 30-degree envelope?
Chairman, Commissioner Crabtree, for Santa Barbara, we don't allow that. No, but to be serious. People will try to get what they, you know, they, it's an economic decision as well, right? People want their second story, they want it to be, you know, as inexpensive as possible. But we have a pretty strict design process in Santa Barbara. You know, we, second stories have been subject to review since about 1992 for single-family, for most single-family second stories, and now all of them since about 2005, 2006, something like that. So, yeah, I mean, I'm sure there were some, but not that many, I don't think, because of our review process.
Okay. Thanks.
I want to follow up on a point you brought up, and a point that you brought up as well. And by the way, thank you for coming here and your time, I appreciate the meeting we had. It was my understanding from you, and I think I got this right, that the solar ordinance was really about, not about solar panels, it was about not shading out someone's windows to let the light come in. And that was the original purpose of the ordinance when it was passed. Is that correct?
Chairman, Commissioner Becker, yes and, I mean, yes and no and yes, right? It's a little bit, so, the people who wrote this ordinance were thinking very far ahead, and thinking that someday that there would be solar collectors that would be more prominent, there would be more of them, it'd be more economically feasible to put them on. So there's a whole, there's a section that says, you're not, you can't shade solar collectors in existence. And then there's also the portion, you know, the other part of it, which is not shading people's windows in their backyards and that sort of thing. So it's dual-purpose. It just was, up until the last couple of years, it just hasn't been economically feasible, really, to have so many solar collectors. And it's only recently that's become popular.
So, the reason I bring it up, obviously, is somewhat of a leading question, is I know there's a number of architects that have concerns that haven't been familiar with the ordinance, that when, they're worried that, you know, you've got a house next door, and you architect a new house, and it complies with the height limit and the ordinance, but it does cast a shadow on the roof next door, no solar panels, correct? So theoretically, if it's within the ordinance, it would pass if it's got good architecture. And then later on, you know, someone really couldn't, or I guess the question is, do you find that it could still limit the neighbor's ability to put on solar? Have you run into that situation?
Chairman, Commissioner Becker, we haven't run into that situation ourselves that I know of. I would say that it's theoretically possible, you know, with the right configuration. For example, if the southern house was very close to the northern property line, and the northern house is really close to the southern property line, and, you know, the northern house is kind of, it was not very tall, and, yeah, I mean, it's possible, but it's... And like I said, it wasn't meant to work 100% of the time. You know, it was supposed, it was, it got to a place where we felt it was, at least the council at the time, felt it was a reasonable balance between allowing development on the southern property and preserving solar access on the northern property.
So you don't really see that conflict too often, then I suppose, unless it's like a shotgun lot where the homes are really close together, you might see occasionally that situation?
Chairman, Commissioner Becker, I've never seen that situation myself. I haven't heard of my staff telling me about it. You know, I'm not sure that if the house, if the southern house is built according to the solar access ordinance, and the northern property owner wanted to put solar panels and their house is shaded, I'm not sure that they would come and talk to us about it.
Right.
So, it could be that people have been stymied by the development, but I don't have any knowledge of it.
Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, I've heard already that there are some concerns about it impacting the architect's ability to design a, you know, a nice home, and the other thing that, you know, so I really couldn't address it then, I invited people to come to the workshop. The other thing that I had noted, though, is this ordinance does have a variance, essentially, a process for, you know, where there is, it doesn't, you know, work, the ordinance doesn't work for them, they can come in, they can go through, what did you call them, shade studies?
Shadow plans.
Shadow plans. And you gave an example, I think a couple of examples to us when we came to visit you, that the folks came in and they actually showed a shadow plan where it might cast a shadow across the roof somewhat, but it wouldn't cast shadows across the windows of the bedrooms and the master bedrooms and the kitchens and things like that. And there were very few cases where they had to have a variance. But there were some cases where people did do that study and were able to get a variance. Is that an accurate depiction?
Chairman, Commissioner Becker, yes, that is. There's actually three different, there's three levels of review. There's by right, so if you meet the 12 feet and 30 degrees, then you're in. If you don't meet that, there's something called an exemption or exception. And it's a pretty limited set of circumstances that would allow you to get the exception, but that, it does exist. And then the next step is something that we call a modification, which is like, for the city of Santa Barbara, it's like variance light. It's not a full variance, but we allow encroachments into setbacks or, you know, encroaching into the solar height limit with a public hearing in front of the staff hearing officer, and public notice and what have you. So there's three different levels, and each level has, I mean, both of the non-by-right standards or levels have a shadow plan. You have to show that you don't cast a shadow on your neighboring, your neighbor to the north, their windows, any more than the maximum building height allowable under the solar height ordinance would allow.
So just stop there. So that's, there's a by right, which is you pass. Now, is it possible to have a by right with a pass, but it still casts a shadow across the solar panels? Because that wouldn't be allowed, right? I thought you said you had an ordinance where you couldn't cast shadow on a neighboring solar.
Chairman, Commissioner Becker, not exactly. In fact, no. Because the ordinance couldn't address every situation, right? The idea is there's a balance between what you're allowed to build on the southern side versus how much you're allowed to shade on the northern part. And there is, I think theoretically, there's a possibility where a house built according to our solar access ordinance would shade the neighbor's house such that solar panels would not be feasible. I think that's a possibility.
Okay. And you answered my question, I didn't mean to feel like I was kind of grilling you here.
No, that's okay.
It was an important distinction for people to understand.
Happy to do it.
Because one thing I think we have to consider as a commission is, that's possible, I guess it could happen. So we need to really discuss the by right, because if we don't have it one way or the other, we could really get into some interesting discussions here. So, and the other thing is that the, we're talking about the winter solstice, so that's at the lowest point. The solar panels do work during the winter, I have solar panels, and they theoretically are more efficient because it's cooler, the ambient temperature is cooler, but the time the sun is in the right position is much shorter. So generally, you don't get the production you would get in the summer. So there may be a reason to say, well, you know, you're not, that's like the worst-case scenario right there. So we should probably discuss that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foster?
Yeah, I'm curious about how you dealt with landscape, existing landscape that maybe is adjacent to a clean lot that has, on its north side boundary would have landscape in excess of 12 feet? Or maybe a property that doesn't have any landscape? How do you deal with landscape issues, trees and that sort of thing, existing and non-planning? Do you have a...
Yes, Chairman, Commissioner Foster. Essentially, what the ordinance does is say, ignore all landscaping. Do not count the shading that landscaping, current existing landscaping provides as a defense, I guess. Or not a defense, but a justification to allow you to go above the 12 feet and 30 degrees. Right, so if we're talking about the exemption, one of the exemption categories is, if you can show that the shadow that your building is in a cast is already within the shadow of some other shadow that's cast, right? Let's say, for some weird reason, you're right next to a giant commercial building to your south, and then you're going to build a second story on your house, and then there's another, there's a residential building just to the north of you, right? If you could show that your second story is always going to be, the shadow cast by your second story is always superseded by the bigger building, or a hill, or something, then that's a reason to give an exception. But vegetation does not count, so you can't count a shadow that's cast by a tree, or a hedge, or any type of vegetation. We just, the direction the ordinance gives us is essentially to pretend it's not there.
That's interesting, because let's say there is no vegetation on that southern lot that, and the northern lot wants solar access to it, and the individual in the southern lot decides he wants to plant eucalyptus trees on his northern property line, he could very easily block any solar access at all. I'm, you know, we're talking hypothetically, but, you know, it happens.
Chairman, Commissioner Foster, that's absolutely true in the city of Santa Barbara. We don't regulate the heights of trees. In fact, we are working on a hedge height ordinance. Right now, our interior lot line hedge height's limited at eight feet. And if you want to go above eight feet, you have to ask for a modification, right, public hearing from neighbors. We are looking at amending that to maybe be 12 feet. And one of the, we just went to, this went to planning commission last month, and one of the things that our planning commission was interested in was making sure that if you went beyond, if you went to 12 feet or beyond, you'd have to comply with the solar ordinance. So then it would be, then we would start taking some vegetation, new vegetation, into consideration, but not, still not trees.
And that's being discussed, it's not ordinance at this point, okay?
My comment or opinion on that is that photosynthesis trumps photovoltaic. And a tree does a lot more than, you know, with photosynthesis, it cools the area around it, it provides shade, habitat for animals, there's so many benefits that a tree provides that, I mean, I agree to stay silent on that issue.
All right. Who else? Commissioner Nolan, you have any questions? Mr. Conrad, thank you very much, I appreciate you...
Sure, I'll be in the audience, just in case you have more.
I appreciate you taking the time to come here and share knowledge about this, it sounds very interesting. Okay, Mr. Clark, is there any more in the workshop, or is this it?
No, that's it. Really, it was more of an opportunity to hear from the public, so I would suggest that.
Well, this is a public hearing, is there anybody that'd like to speak about this? We got two people. Come on up. Please, say your name and address, and then we'll go for you.
My name is Ben Turner, address, well, my postal address is P.O. Box 314. So I live in Ojai. My concern is actually, probably mostly addressed, Troy brought it up, about solar panels on the roof. Typically, when you do design for a solar house, whether it be passive or whether it be photovoltaic, you plan to have, just as much as you would at a view down the beach... at a view down the beach for the worst possible scenario where someone else's development could block your solar access or your view. I'd hate for Ojai to be in a situation where there was a race to permit, where one person's entitlement was taking another person's entitlement. If it's just a rule where there's a, a property line, a dimension and an angle at solstice, that's great. But the point where you get into someone saying, well, well, I've got a solar panel already, so you don't get your normal entitlement, you've created a taken, which is a planning term to say someone has taken your normal entitlement away. And while the colleague from Santa Barbara said, talked about self-enlightened people. Unfortunately, I deal with violations. And people are not self-enlightened with their neighbors. They tend to use government as, as an instrument of revenge. And you have a situation where somebody goes down to harbor freight, grabs a cheapish solar panel, gets an over-the-counter zoning clearance to put it somewhere, knowing full well that it would reduce the person's entitlement next to them. So I'd hate to get caught in that legal conflict there for you. The only other point I was going to make was regarding these, these lines and perhaps speaking about solar, solar which is on the roof that wouldn't be covered by the line of angle, is where it would be a conditional use permit, which is what I usually represent. I was just going to suggest that in situations where it's not an entitlement to develop, but it is discretionary, that you could impose further scrutiny. To say that if there was a passive solar house or a, or an active solar panel on a roof, on an adjacent parcel, that will be blocked by a discretionary project that still conformed to the angle rule, but still cast a shadow, that that would be a position where you could deny the CUP applicant or make them modify their plans, because it's not a usual entitlement process. So I was just going to offer that. So I just want to make sure you don't blunder into a bad place where people are racing against each other to get a permit for the wrong reasons. That was all. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Miley, I'd stand up first.
Bill Miley. Regarding trees and tall bushes, I certainly agree with Mr. Grabkey's comment about the value of trees. But I would like to ask you to consider new trees or new bushes that are planted after structures are already in place. A friend of ours has a nice, had a nice view years ago. And the person on the south side decided to plant ash trees, something like that, fast-growing tree. And now they don't have a view. I think we have, I know we have a view shed ordinance, but I'm not familiar with the details. Wouldn't, maybe that would apply here in addition to the solar access ordinance. But I would hope that we would not allow plants to be, or trees to be planted on the north edge of a property. And after a few years, it would block the sun that comes into the northern house or the northern solar panel. And that would be something that we would regulate. We value views so much in the Ojai Valley, and we value trees, but new ones maybe should be planted someplace else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. And then we had one other person who wanted to speak.
Thank you, sir. Steve Quilice, 516 West Eucalyptus. We have a house that faces south. And like most of you, I think, we get regular calls from people who want to sell us solar panels to put on our roof. I got one just this week, and I said, I don't want to put solar panels on the front of my house. I might be considering putting them on the north side. And the person that spoke that time said, there are solar panels that work just as well on the north slope of a roof as on the south slope. I don't know. I don't know the technology. But if you're going to get into regulating this shadow business, I would suggest you have staff look into that and see if in fact, there are solar panels that work just as well on the north side of a house as on the south side, because that would be equivalent to being in the shadow of another structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Just clap. Come right up.
Commissioners, good evening. I'm speaking as an individual, but with some insight, Betsy Clapp, with some insight into the discussions at the council meeting. And one of the things that I think has been sort of forgotten in translation is that the discussion has never been solely about solar panels. It's been about sun. And in some ways, I think the potential ordinance has been misnamed. That it should be called the sun ordinance, not the solar ordinance, because immediate assumption is that we're speaking purely of solar. And the other thing that's really important to recognize is that a good percentage of the lots in our community would not really suffer, for lack of a better word, with this restriction because the lots are large enough, that any remodeling that would take place on those properties could be taken place without negatively impacting a person on the northern side. And so primarily, what we're talking about is the midtown area. And that's where the greatest concern for council came in, was in these very narrow, deep lots, where there's the potential of a 30-foot remodel going all the way down the northern side of a piece of property, 30 feet up, and restricting not just solar panel light access, but sun into the entire property. So it's mostly the midtown area where we're talking where this ordinance is really going to be applied most often in these small cottages. So I just wanted to clarify and also broaden maybe the view about what we're discussing beyond just solar panels and the access of the sun to them. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Good evening. We currently have a building height of 30 feet. The tower, 65 feet. Is that going to weigh into it somehow? That's just a question.
As long as it doesn't shade anything, I think we're fine. Thank you, Dale. Anybody else who would like to speak? Yes. Step up there and let us know.
I apologize if this is something that somebody's already said, but I've been able to hear about 10% of what's been said tonight. And I just want to comment about the 30, 30-foot building height being reduced to 25. Would you consider the angle of a roof to be an architectural feature? Because I'm contemplating putting a second story on a little piece of my house. And I look around Ojai at the second stories, and the angles on the roofs are so bizarre that I'm not even quite sure. I mean, I'm from, come from New England, so maybe have a different bias. But if your house is a little bit above grade, and you're trying to get a decent building height, I'm not quite sure what the height is of these different floors. You know, you don't want to get a really ugly slope on your roof because it's not very attractive. And it would be nice if we were kind of concerned with the aesthetics of what the houses look like in this town. So I'm just wondering if in fact, that is considered to be an architectural feature that might enhance what the house looked like. I can understand you wouldn't want the whole thing to be 30 feet tall. And, but it might need to be 26 feet tall or something like that. So that, that's the only thing that concerned me about this building height restriction, is that kind of a consideration as to what it might do to the aesthetics of roof lines, things like that. Excuse me, what was your name?
Oh, sorry. Could you say your name for the record?
My name?
Yeah.
My name's Bobby Corbin.
Okay. Thanks, Bobby.
You know, that kind of deserves a bit of an answer, and it kind of gets into the, the sun ordinance. I have, I agree with. That was actually my original point.
I'm sorry. I'm a little dead. I probably should be sitting.
Hopefully, you can hear me. The grade issue is always a very interesting issue. And I believe Santa Barbara, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, when they're doing the solar ordinance, it would be at the point of the house that's on the northern side where the, essentially, the ground meets the, the building. And then they go out and then 12 feet up from that. Is that correct? Yes, that's correct. So you mentioned, in your particular example, you want to add, and you also gave the example of where you, your house may be on a higher grade. Well...
Above, sitting above the grade.
Okay.
There's a, you know, crawl space underneath.
One thing you would want to do is to, and I think the definition of grade, I don't know if it's under consideration for change right now. Is it currently at the curb or at the, the building?
It's at the building.
It's at the building. So you want to make sure you know where your grade hits, hits the home, because that will make a, quite, it could make quite a difference in how, yeah. So it's not at the curb. So if the grade goes up and your home's up there, the grade's, you know, up there, not down here. And I think...
You're saying it's to the curb?
No, it's not to the curb, at the home.
Sitting on the ground.
Correct. So keep that in mind.
Mr. Clark?
I just wanted to add, in addition to that, the, the basic height limit of 25 feet, but up to 30 feet for architectural features, was specifically worded that way to allow things like a steeper roof or, or other features that make the building more attractive. So the answer would be yes, but there is a concern about the solar.
Thank you.
But my, my understanding then is that the ordinance would have to change on that because the, the roof pitch is part of the building, not, not an architectural feature.
Again, the, the intent was to allow that. So if you think the language needs to be changed, then we should change the language, because that was the intent.
The, the other thing maybe staff could clarify is the, the building height is measured from the highest adjacent grade, as I recall. Maybe you could, someone could check that out.
I thought it was the average grade, but I don't know.
I'm pretty sure it's highest adjacent.
I think it was the highest. And I had a question, too.
Highest existing adjacent grade.
Right. And then what's the difference if you had a raised foundation and a foundation that was on a slab? Does it count? Do you get the extra 18 inches or whatever that height differential is between the finished grade and the finished floor elevation if it's a raised foundation?
Let me ask, are you referring to the solar height limit? How we measure the grade for the solar height limit?
Right.
Or just in general?
For the solar height.
Okay. Maybe I could ask Danny to explain how they do that in Santa Barbara then.
Thanks. So in the city of Santa Barbara, we measure the solar height from the highest point of contact between the building and the ground. So, and it doesn't matter whether you have a raised foundation or a slab. It's just wherever the, wherever the building hits the ground. And if you have a flat lot, like this one over here, it's all the same, right? But if you're on a sloped lot, for example, you're on this kind of a lot, right? And then you have, it's one of these things where it's two stories on one side and one story on the other side. You would measure it from this side, the highest point of contact. Similarly, you know, sometimes you'll have a house that looks like this, where it's at an angle to the slope, so you only hit it at one corner of the building, right? Every other corner is, it hits it lower. So you'd measure it from this point right here where it hits the grade. So then you, so then wherever the northern property line is, you would, you would basically take that elevation, oops, and then, and then you would translate it over to the northern property line, right? And then from that point, you'd measure up 12 feet. So if, so in the city of Santa Barbara, we happen to, we happen to slope from south to north, pretty much. And so in that case, you're usually, not always, but usually, your northern neighbor is a little bit higher than you, sometimes a lot higher than you. So in that case, you know, there's, there's a benefit for the northern neighbor because you're, because you're higher topographically. But sometimes, you know, it's the opposite. There's a few, there's a, there's a number of places in town where you're, where you're on the other side of a hill, and then it works to your disadvantage on, on that side. So I hope that answered the question.
This makes sense, makes sense to me. Mr. Cochrane, I had another question while you were up there. You mentioned that this is technically difficult to interpret. This seems like a really simple thing to me. I, I'm curious as to why people make it difficult.
One of the reasons is because, because when people come in for a development, they don't come in with a model like this, right? They come in with a plan that shows four elevations. And you have to figure out which, which way is north on the plan. You got to figure out which one's the elevation that shows the right, the right elevation. For example, in this, sorry, in this situation here, north is that property line. So you have to find either this elevation, right, or that elevation, so that you can, so that you can do this, right, up 12 feet or 18 feet and then up 30 degrees, right? Some people... The reason it gets difficult is because, first of all, the downtown grid of Santa Barbara is on a, basically about a 45-degree angle from true north. So we have two northern property lines, and you got to, you got to look at, at both sides. So it's, so that's one, one issue. The other issue is that if you're going above 12, if you're going up, if you're trying to get an exception or a modification, the shadow plan, the preparation of the shadow plan can be, can be intense. Especially if you have a lot of, you know, something like this is pretty easy, right? But if you, if, if you have a very well-articulated roof with a bunch of different ridges and what have you, and spires or towers, you have to, you have to show that at, you know, three different times a day, 9:00 AM, noon, and, and 3:00 PM. So altogether, it, you know, although the concept, you don't want to shade your neighbor too much, is pretty easy to articulate, the, the actual mechanics of it can, can be confusing for people. And even our staff.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions for Mr. Cochrane?
I'm sorry. Chairman, can I add something? One of the speakers raised a, a point that I, I don't think I addressed very well. Remember what I was saying? But if you meet the 12, the 12 feet and 30 degrees, it's by right, you get it, right? And I just wanted to make, make sure that, that you knew that in the city of Santa Barbara, that means if there's, if there's solar panels or you shade all your neighbors' windows, you can still do that. You're just allowed it. That's part of the balance between shading and allowing second stories. So if you're, if you, if you meet it, you're in. And the other point is that as far as the rush to the well, this, the way it works in the city of Santa Barbara, and I believe it's the way that it's proposed to work here, is we have a 30-foot height limitation for single-family zones. And in addition to that, you have this 30-degree angle. So, so it just, it further limits what, what you would have without this, you know, this ordinance further limits and, and provides more accessibility to the sun than you would have without it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other comments? This is a workshop, so it's kind of informal. But if everybody's happy with what we've got so far, I think we'll move on to the next one.
I like the comment that was made by the gentleman. It'd be good to actually hear from a solar contractor or an installer, so we could ask him technical questions about, you know, angles of inclination, that sort of thing, efficiency, how much is lost when you get off that, whatever is considered the optimum angle, that sort of thing. Is that, I would like to see, hear, just as we did from Daniel here, that someone speak and address this on the actual technical aspect of it as well. I think it'd be informing and might help us understand the process a little better.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have a couple of them. I mentioned before that one of my, I, I think it's great that we're seeing building height and, and solar access addressed at the same time, because they're really intertwined. Just to take care of one little thing, I just looked up the, the height in the municipal code, and it says the maximum allowable height shall be measured as the vertical... code, and it says the maximum allowable height shall be measured as the vertical distance from the existing grade of the site to the allowed number of feet above grade. And then, it gives this diagram. So, if it's sloped, so is your maximum height sloped, right, to the existing. And I understand that that's different from what we're talking about with solar access. For that, we're measuring from the northerly, northerly side up and then 30 degrees. But, what I had mentioned before is I'm concerned that this doesn't encourage, that if we have unintended consequences that are going to not encourage solar, then we should know about that. And one of the reasons is we have another state law coming. Title 24 was just amended, and it, one of the requirements is that by 2020, all new residential has to be zero net energy. And also, major remodels or repurposing will have to be zero net energy, which means that first you have to superinsulate, tighten it up, use passive solar, and then whatever it takes to use renewable energy on your lot to bring you to a zero net, so that, in other words, you're, that home is not using, is not, it balances out. Any electricity that you bring in is also being produced on an annual basis, so it's offset. You don't, you're not going to do that, and it'd be a very rare case that you could do that without solar PV, to generate that electricity on an annual basis. So, this is, this is going to be pretty important. I think it's more than just making sure we're allowing access, but are we also making it, are we encouraging or making it easy, or not putting stumbling blocks in front of people who want to do it and will have to do it eventually? And, one of those, one of those issues that where this could happen, and if it's going to happen, we should understand the consequences of it, is that if we, if we say a single-story residential building in excess of 20 feet would have to go to design review. That's, that was, that's one of the proposals. Now, to do a one-story with, with a roof pitch that's at the optimum roof pitch for solar PV, that building would be 24 feet tall. We're at, it's, our latitude is 34.4 degrees latitude. The ideal pitch of a solar panel is the same as your latitude on an annual basis, and that's a 7/12 pitch. So, a typical building would be about 24 feet tall.
You're assuming a certain width in order to come up with that.
Yeah, I just sketched up a 40-foot width building at 7/12. So, you'd have 12 feet of roof pitch, and then 10-foot, 10-foot floor plate, and then you typically want to be about two feet above grade on the average. So, that'd be 24. So, what we're saying is, if you want to do the solar the right way, you've got to go to design review. You can't, and I don't know if we, if that's an unintended consequence. If we're trying to do a solar, a solar ordinance to encourage solar, we probably don't want to make them have to come to design review with a single-story home.
And I guess the other thing, Betsy had brought it up, is this a solar panel ordinance, or is it solar access? Meaning, yes, it would work for solar panels and/or you're allowing solar sun, yeah, sure. Go ahead. So, anyway, I was just saying, we need to define exactly what it is and the need.
I completely agree. Passive, you should try to do passive solar first.
That's number one, first, right.
And that'll cut down on your energy use, and that'll get you closer to that zero net.
That's zero.
But, even then, you're going to have to have the panels.
Right. So, yeah, Betsy, go ahead.
Well, that's why I stepped up, because this isn't a solar ordinance. This is, and that's why I wanted that kind of clarification, why I think it's kind of mistakenly named. It's about sun, and access of sun on a northern piece of property. Solar is an element of the access to sun, it gives you the opportunity to use solar. But this isn't a solar ordinance. And I think that we do need to have a solar ordinance. I think we do need to have solar requirements when people do extensive remodels or build new in town, and I think that's something that's long overdue. But I think that that needs to be addressed. This is, again, I'm speaking personally, as an individual, separate, you know, spoken about separately, but council as a whole spoke about it as access to sun, so yes, you're right.
So, yeah, so essentially, is solar access means access to sun.
Correct.
And then the secondary one would be like photovoltaic.
Yeah, that's just, that's just a benefit of having the sun access, not inhibited on your property is the ability to do solar. So, there's a distinction, but it's an important distinction.
The other thing I wanted to mention, and I don't disagree with you, Paul, on that comment, but, you know, solar panels are not a panacea, nor will they be. There's already technology out there, natural gas technology that's being put in homes to give you that zero net. They're not popular here in the West Coast. So, and they may be, depends on a lot of things, but, you know, there's so much technology coming out so rapidly that, you know, we get kind of wrapped up in the technologies that's right here, right now. We need to be thinking about, you know, the evolution of energy efficiency, which is probably heading in a lot of different directions, including wind energy, that you can put around on the, you know, the eve of your house, and can generate tremendous amounts. So, you know, we really should be considering, you know, where, you know, how much we want to kind of raise the bar or lower the bar, I'm not really sure. We have to kind of think about that.
Natural gas isn't going to qualify for this one, because it's not a renewable. I know I've seen the calculations on it, that they say that if you put a natural gas turbine in, and it's so much less than the electricity that that nets it out, but they're still using fossil fuels, it's just more efficient, yeah.
All right. Did you have another comment?
Thanks, Ben Turner. I was going to mention, I wouldn't try and beat the Title 24 requirements before they come. By raising any bar here, it's really tough to meet them already, and they're advancing their rate, which is getting difficult to meet up with. And as Troy brought out, some of the technology that hasn't trickled down yet that I read about that's coming out could make all these ordinances defunct. This thin film technology, flexible film, transparent film, you could find out for a few years from now that we could be painting our houses with a product that could hook up and provide solar energy, even if not as efficient as a traditional PV, that it could be enough to balance the net energy. But I know that one not so bad on remodels, new homes, the Title 24 requirements now in California, you know, really sometimes direct the design of the building. And I do agree, the passive solar is definitely better than trying to plug into something, but, you know, that too could change. So, I wouldn't want to see any ordinances passed by a commission that tries to raise the bar to get us ready for a 2020. It's going to be tough enough when we get there, and hopefully the technology will have evolved to make that easier. I'm interested to hear too, what an expert, if you bring one in, has to say about what the technology's coming down the line. So, it might affect perhaps the wording of the ordinance, but also if there was a time expiration on the ordinance or a future change that you could re-review in a few years. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. So, any other comments? I think we'll move on. The last, well, it's not the last, but the fourth item on our agenda is zoning ordinance amendments to implement the 2014-21 housing element program. And could we hear from staff on this?
Chair and commissioners, good evening. Nice to be back with you. I have a very brief presentation and a few slides, but before I get into the details, just a real quick overview on the timing issue. Now, you recall that the housing element was adopted by the city council back in December, and it's now up at HCD for review for certification. Certification, as we talked about when we were going through the housing element process, is very important, and it's something that we're trying very hard to get. So, the state has 90 days to review the housing element and issue their opinion regarding certification. So, our objective is to complete a few ordinance amendments that they specifically itemized in their review of our draft housing element. We'd like to get the ordinances adopted, if we can, prior to the close of their 90-day review period, so that we're able to have them take into consideration the progress that the city has made before they issue their final certification determination. So, we feel if these ordinances are adopted, that it would greatly enhance the city's likelihood of getting that certification. Sherry, if you could go to the next slide, please. What I'd like to briefly cover is what is in your staff report, and then be happy to answer any questions. And of course, this is a public hearing, and so you want to hear from anyone who has an interest in this. There are a number of items that you see in the bullet points there that are called out as implementation actions in the housing element. So, let me just quickly go through those, and then you can ask questions, and I'll try to respond. You'll recall the discussion of the SPL site acreage during the housing element hearings. The, we believe that it's not necessary to include the specific acreages in the ordinance itself. Those acreages are discussed in the housing element, and so, we're proposing to just take the acreage out of the ordinance, because it's simply not necessary. With regard to height limit, you recall that there was originally a three-story height limit for the SPL overlay that was adopted last year, and so, we believe, and HCD has not objected up to this point, to reducing that to a two-story height limit, and so, this ordinance specifically would reduce the height limit to two stories and 30 feet within the SPL. With regard to density bonus, the original SPL ordinance said that affordable housing projects within the SPL were not eligible for a density bonus, but that does not square with state law, and so, we're proposing to delete that provision of the SPL. There is a provision of state law that's referred to as no net loss. What that means is that whatever density or unit yield we assume for a site in the housing element, then the city can't approve a project at a lower density unless the city can make findings that there's enough capacity someplace else to make up that reduction, hence the name no net loss. So, we're explicitly including language to that effect in the ordinance. The lot consolidation incentive is something that HCD has encouraged many cities to adopt, and that is when you have small sites that are less than an acre. If you could create some sort of an incentive for the consolidation of adjacent parcels so that you get a larger building site that has, you can take advantage of economies of scale with a multifamily project. And so, what we're proposing in the ordinance is that if two or more parcels are consolidated so that you get at least an acre, then the developer would be entitled to a 5% density bump. This would be in addition to state density bonus law. The next item has to do with the affordability requirements for qualifying projects within the SPL. And you recall when we had our public hearing on the housing element, I mentioned that HCD was very uncomfortable with the high affordability requirements in the SPL, and so, we're proposing to bring that down to what is typical in other cities in California in terms of affordability requirement. Specifically, when you add up the different affordability categories, the original ordinance required 65% of the units to be in the affordable range. We're proposing to bring that down to 25%. Distributed, 10%, very low, 10% low, 5% moderate. We believe HCD would be supportive of those ratios. The issue of transitional and supportive housing is what you might consider a black and white rule under state law that it was amended six, seven years ago. Basically, transitional supportive housing must be regulated in the exact same way as other residential uses of that type in that zone. So, we've modified the language in the SPL ordinance to conform it to state law, basically, and this is one of those black and white issues. And finally, the issue of second unit compliance program. This is not something that is required under the, by HCD, under the housing element, but this is something that was moving along in parallel to the housing element that you will recall. And so, the ordinance would eliminate the provision requiring a report of residential building standards. And there are action items included in the housing element that would address the second unit issue. Those would not change. The ordinance would simply remove that reported residential building records requirement. So, that's what I wanted to briefly cover, just summarize what's in this ordinance. We are tentatively hoping to take this to the city council on February 25th, and the HCD review period, their review letter is due no later than March 14th. So, if we can move this forward, and if it's the council's pleasure to adopt it, then we can get it up to HCD before their letter is due, to show them that the city is making a good faith effort to move forward on those various commitments. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
On, I'm looking at the attachment B, page 5 of 10, on back to the height limit, and I see that there's, the proposal is to change some of these from 35 feet, three stories maximum, to 30 feet and two stories. And, so, my question is, is that lesser than what our current code allows? Does our current code allow the 35 and three stories?
Well, the current SPL ordinance allows 35 feet and three stories in most of these sites, so it would be a reduction from what's currently allowed under the SPL ordinance.
That's the one that we passed in the previous housing element.
Right, but not, but only in the SPL, not elsewhere in the code. So, that was, that 35 and three was a bump from what could normally be built in town. I just wanted to confirm that.
That is my understanding, unless, okay, yes.
Yeah, I was trying to look it up, I didn't, I didn't get to it yet. So, then, the 30 and two is just, that's our typical building height limit.
Yeah, I'm sorry, chair and members of the commission, it is a little bit confusing having both of these items on the same agenda. The affordable housing overlay is kind of a standalone item that only applies when the council overlays it on a parcel, and it actually increases the height limit on that parcel in accordance with whatever's included. So, in the fourth cycle, because of the requirements that HCD imposed on us at that time, it was 35 feet and three stories, which was very unpopular. In the fifth... In the fifth cycle, we proposed to reduce it, and as Mr. Douglas indicated, they didn't object. So again, it would be somewhat different than the basic height limit when it's imposed, when it's overlaid on a property.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to clarify on the proportions of the affordability, the very low, the low versus the moderate. The percentages went from 15, 15, 15 to 10, 10, and five. Now, you kind of alluded to it, but are those percentages somewhat of, something of a standard that you find throughout the state? Or you said you, you thought that HCD would find them acceptable? Just trying to get behind the justification for that.
Yes. The way I would characterize the numbers is, first of all, there is no mandate in state law that prescribes what those numbers should be. So it's a judgment call. The numbers that we're suggesting in this ordinance are numbers that are relatively common around California for cities that do require an affordability component as part of a multifamily project. But you could quibble with the details, you know, if you bumped any one of those up or down, 5% or 10%, it might still fly with HCD. So what we've done here is put in some, some numbers that are, I would say, fairly common.
But they specifically responded to our 15%, saying, "We want to see something less than that."
They did. And the reason that HCD says that is because they believe that if the affordability requirement gets too high, then it makes it less and less feasible for affordable housing to be built. Now, notwithstanding, you'll see all around the state 100% affordable projects that are funded with very large subsidies through tax credits or bonds and so forth. So they're looking at what you might think of as market rate affordable housing that maybe doesn't have tax credits or a lot of subsidies, and so if the affordability requirement gets too high on those market rate projects, then it kills the deal.
I have a question. And this would be regarding, about the second unit compliance program, and I realize that that's, you know, something the city of Ojai came up with, and it's not required by HCD. The one area with that where I have, well, actually, there's more than one area, but one of the main areas that I have a question about is the, you know, there's this incentivizing program to reduce or eliminate the city fees. And my concern with that is, is that it's almost rewarding people that have put in a unit that wasn't permitted, that is non-compliant. And I feel like the, they should be paying the same fee as anyone else who's actually, you know, going through the permitting process. Is that something we can discuss, or is this, you know, our only option that you've got in here?
I'm going to ask Rob if he wants to respond to that, because I'm, I haven't been involved nearly as closely as some other folks.
So, first of all, the language that's quoted on page 3 of 3 in your staff report is actually a quote from the housing element. So, so that language has actually already been approved. I'm sure to some degree, there's some discretion in how we implement it, because it doesn't say eliminate, it says by reduce or eliminate, and it doesn't say by how much.
Yeah, or, right.
So I think to that degree, there's discretion on the part of the council with your advice as to how to approach it.
Okay. Thank you.
Something that we would be discussing tonight, or at another time?
No, really, really tonight, we're just discussing the zoning code amendments that are described in order to, in order to get ahead of the game.
Sure, SPL.
But the, we were going to put together a report based on the joint meeting that you had with the Building Appeals Board, and take that to council, and then those, most of those items come back to you as sort of the first advisory group that takes a look at them when they're implemented.
Yeah, I would really like to see it again, because along with Kathy, I think now that we had a little time to reflect upon that discussion, a lot of, as usual, complexity seems to snowball the more you consider an issue, and I see a lot of conflict there that I think warrants more further discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, too. I think there's a lot of gray area in it and a lot of debate as well. You know, just some discussions I've had, too.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, so I'm going to have an issue from left field. I brought up before, I don't know if you're the right person to answer it, or Rob is. And the only reason I bring it up is it's brought in, it's been brought up by, actually, Mr. Turner, who was here, as well as a couple of local architects, that said they went into, they're working on some projects, and they talked to staff, I don't know if it was Sherry, or Ann, or whoever, and they were told that our setbacks were changed by our housing element. They brought this up in that joint meeting, which is extremely disturbing to me. If we've changed our setbacks somehow through the housing element, that should have been something I think would have been completely separate, and we would have had a lot of discussion over it. I'm wondering if, I don't know, if you all looked into that? What's going on with that?
I don't know the details, but the change in the setback was done as a zoning code amendment, not as the housing element. So the, so the housing element does not have that, and the zoning code does. And I believe it's actually, John was just pointing to the setback section on page 4 of 10. So, I think it's, you could review that now, or you could review that again when we bring back the second unit item.
Okay, so. This only applies to the SPLs, right?
This only applies to the SPL. But the impression that these people were given, that these weren't SPL lots, these were just regular developments, and we, they were told that our setbacks changed along with the adoption of the housing element. And I've had three people use those exact same words.
Right. I, I don't know the details about that, but that is something that you can review when we bring the second unit. In fact, that is one of the things on the list of items that were discussed then. So the issue of setbacks for the second units will come back to you.
Okay, and I don't, they weren't specifically necessarily referring to second units.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's a pretty major issue.
Well, we will take note of that and bring that back.
I would request that we put this as a future agenda item now, for a future meeting, as a separate agenda item, because we've got architects working on projects now that are very concerned about it. And I think we either have correct or misinformation coming across the counter, I don't know. They're proceeding as if our setbacks have changed.
I think that would be the appropriate action. Put it on an agenda and go through it.
Okay. Great.
All right.
Tori, one question. So, they're referring to projects that don't have anything to do with housing element. You're just talking about they're coming forward with a residential project.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree with you.
All right. This is a public hearing, and I wonder if anybody has any comments from the public? Anything anybody'd like to add? Mr. Miley?
Yes, please.
Always willing to comment.
I guess if I'm going to sit here, I might as well say something. An accolade to the planning commission and the city council for lowering the, listening to the public and lowering the height in the SPL. I remember the emotion that we've gone through when it was first proposed and adopted. And also to respond to the public and eliminate the building, the second, what was it, the second dwelling reporting requirement. That was really important, too. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else like to make any? Yeah, Dale, come on in.
I think I have more questions and comment, but referring to the workshop that we had with you folks in the Building Appeals Board, we were mostly discussing the second unit compliance program. And there were, I've run away from that meeting feeling good about it. I have felt that we were going to look at some things that we were going to either change or refine, such as the deed restrictions and things like that. And so I guess that's going to come up at the city council meeting. Is that correct? All those things we discussed?
I don't know if that's part of the housing element, or if that's something that...
Well, it's part of the housing element, isn't it?
Maybe Mr. Clark can guess it.
Thank you, chair and members of the commission. The chairman of the two bodies were appointed as a committee to put together a report of that meeting, which will go to the council. So, so the council will receive the input from that meeting. However, implementation of the various items, in some cases requires resolution changes, in some cases requires zoning changes, and those things would all come back to you for further comment. And I did hear the comments earlier that there's been further thought and probably need for more discussion on some of those items, so there will be an opportunity for you to do that. But that's separate from the housing element.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right. It says here that we need to adopt a resolution on this. Is that correct? And we're going to send this on to the city council?
Yes, we're asking for your adoption of a resolution that would recommend council adoption of the ordinance.
All right. All right, so I'll move to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 14-01. And that has its attachments A, B, and C, correct? Right. So that's the motion to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 14-01, inclusive of attachments A, B, and C.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Nicklin?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Merk?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
All right, thank you for all the input from everybody. And now we move on to the director's report, and we actually have a director to give a report. I'm so thrilled.
Good evening, and this is my first time, so I guess I'm just going to let you know that the project, I guess under Tab 5, we have the project, their director's decisions. The applicant, John Robertson, and John Strain, project address 612 North Plant Street, was approved 12314. This was a project for fire, repair fire damage in R2 Zone, and that's what we've approved administratively. And that concludes my report.
All right. Do you have a report on code enforcement activity?
I think it's just ongoing. I've filed a report here to kind of let you know what's going on. Staff is continuing to receive complaints and work on them as time allows.
Great, thank you. And how about future agenda items?
Yeah, perhaps. I want to chime in here. You know, when we added this future agenda items thing, I know we have a report about things coming up from staff, but the real, and that's great, but the reason that we suggested and put that on there is also to talk about future agenda items.
All right.
So, which, I think we lost, we kind of lost sight of that a while back, but we're getting better. So we talked about perhaps the issue with the setbacks. So, I don't know how we get that on there, if we take a vote, but I think, you know, maybe we do a motion and a vote so we can get it on there, because otherwise, I won't be here much longer, and I don't know if you guys will remember, but we could ask one of you, too. The other thing is on the, the modification to the, we've got somewhere in our ordinance about, and I, you brought it up, which was the requirement that, or something about deed restrictions, where if you have a home, you can't, you have to live in either the guest house or the main house. To me, that is so critical that we strike that from the record, that that could potentially belong as a separate item. It would be very easy just to get rid of that. It's not something that takes, you know, it takes a couple hearings, it's just one sentence, and it's gone. It's really a problem. So we shouldn't, you know, it's something that we should take very seriously, and either get rid of it or tell people we're not going to. And so, you know, you brought it up earlier, and I know you've talked about it before. It's something that will just hide out there for a while, and then when someone is angry at their neighbor, they'll bring it up, or they'll get potentially involved in a real estate transaction, and someone doesn't disclose it, and it creates a problem. So I think those two items are probably important enough that we might want to just vote and put them on the agenda, so we get them done.
Easy, is it?
Yeah.
All right.
But I'm not going to make the motion since I'm the one.
I don't know that we need a motion, but can we get an indication of staff when we're able to do that?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Could we get an indication of, we have several dates open on the future meetings. Could we just designate one of these meetings as a discussion on setback issue?
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, certainly. With the other issue regarding the deed restriction, I just need some little bit more clarification. Is this a discussion item, or are you looking to have an ordinance change that out of...
Yeah, strike it from the ordinance. It's somewhere hidden in a book over there, and it's been there a long time. I don't think people are really aware of it, but some of the realtors have caught on to it. So, we talked in the joint workshop about getting rid of it as a separate, separate from the housing element, just striking it from the record.
So I guess I need direction from Planning Commission that staff needs to, you know, have that as a project on their, on the books, as a city-sponsored project, and we would be doing the code amendment, which would be a text amendment, environmental that would be, need to be done, as you would do anytime you're changing text of a adopted zoning ordinance. So then, then once we got that assimilated into our work product, our program, then we would be able to let you know when that was coming forward back to the Planning Commission. So if it's just a straight direction to have that stricken, you know, that's pretty direct to us, so we don't really have much discussion over it, and then we'll just work on that and the environmental on it, and then bring it forward. So I couldn't give you a date specific, but that's how it would work. But I think the other one, most certainly, you can set a date specific for discussion.
Okay. Well, it looks like March 5th is open, and I just wonder if we could set that up? Does that work? Good, okay. And then you'll keep us informed as far as how things are progressing on the other issue of deed restriction. Thank you. All right. Do we have Planning Commission Subcommittee reports?
Yes.
Okay.
Briefly. We normally, Complete Streets normally would have met today, but we've changed our meeting to February 12th, because Greg Grant, our Public Works Director, wasn't able to attend. He was at another workshop, a grant workshop. So I just wanted to announce that it's open to the public. We meet at 3:00 PM here at City Hall, typically in the conference room. And continuing to work on the Strategic Growth Council grant with Heather Waldstein, our Assistant Planner, and the grant is due the end of this month. So we have our work cut out for us. We're now meeting twice a week to get that done. And then as far as the water ordinance, Paul, I don't know if you remember, at our last meeting, you and I had agreed to maybe take a look at the ordinance, and I know Joe was going to go ahead and review it also, and it had to do with not calling the guidelines a guideline, because they're actually part of the ordinance, and he was going to change it out, and then you and I were going to look at some of the other issues. And I was going to suggest maybe after the end of this month, since I'm working on that grant, it's taking a lot of my time. If that works for you, and I know, you know, with your schedule.
Yeah. Meanwhile, if Sherry or someone could send me an editable version of the landscape ordinance, I might just take a shot at it.
Oh, that'd be great. Right. You could actually just put notes.
First draft, yeah.
Yeah, in Word. Okay. And then we can meet, we'll, we'll talk about it maybe the next meeting or so. Okay, good. That's it, unless anyone has any questions.
Good, thank you. And our city council liaison?
How can you report?
We've heard so much from you already. All right, thank you. Well, that, oh, yes.
Excuse me, may I make one quick announcement?
Yes.
This has to do with, you know, the drought that we're in. what they can do. Our local water companies, especially Casitas, offers classes. I think they're free, or if there's a fee, it's very nominal. I know I've been a presenter a couple times at those. And then, I also wanted to say that our Community Demonstration Garden on March 15th, they're going to be doing a talk on how to take care of oaks and watering them in this drought situation. So, just a little note to everyone about that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other business?
Real quick, John.
Jump right in.
Very fast. Very quick. I just want to formally welcome our new Community Development Director, Kathleen Wald. We're glad to have you here and look forward to working with you in the future. So, welcome.
All right. Our meeting is adjourned.